Trustee Hines, we're ready when you are.
Okay, good evening, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, we are ready, we will now convene the open session called order for the regular scheduled board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District to October 6, 2020. May we have the quorum establishment and roll call, please?
Sure, the time is 5:30. And roll call, trustee Benz?
Benz here.
Trustee Ekas?
Present.
Trustee Hines?
Present.
Trustee La French?
Present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present.
A quorum has been established.
Thank you. We will now stand for the pledge of allegiance. And to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving forward. Item two on the agenda, adoption of the agenda. 2.01, proposed addition deletions and adjustments in order of business, do we have any?
Madam President, we do. Item 1112, academic services approved purchase of next gen math as supplemental math materials for grades K5, math teachers for the 2020-21 school year. We are taking out Columbia and El Mirage, so that does change the amount to $37,868.
Thank you. And you said that was Columbia and El Mirage?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, and so moving forward, 2.02, adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I have my motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Trustee Turner, second.
Any discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee Hines?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item three, closed session declarations, we will be taking items 3.02 to 3.04 into closed session. And public testimony before closed session. 4.01, is there, for the public comment period, do we have anyone?
We do, I believe we have two. One, I'm sorry, Jennifer Reader?
Okay. Thank you. And is that audience member or ADTNs?
She's representing ADTA.
Thank you. Okay, we can go forward with that, Chris.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, Madam President, and Board members. First, I would like to acknowledge the amazing work our Atlanta teachers and staff are doing during this very trying time of learning. Most of us have had to develop an entirely new skill set with only a few months' notice. Teachers have shown incredible tenaciousness and creativity in providing quality education to our students. In spite of technical muddles on a daily basis, logistical difficulties, and emotional and mental drain, we have continued to show up online to our classes with smiles and an upbeat attitude. We are getting a glimpse into our children's home lives, and it isn't easy to see sometimes. Nevertheless, despite daily frustrations, we are doing an exemplary job, and I'm proud to be counted among such professionals. I would like to address tonight's agenda, which seems to be approving a lot of academic services programs, and they come at quite a cost. Before approving that kind of spending, you should get validation that the teachers themselves have had a say in what we will add to our already teeming plates of curriculum. I can speak about one program specifically, the Next Gen Math Program, that carries a price tag of $54,000. I can say that most teachers do not even want this program. Do we really need another app that will probably go unused? Our parents are already overwhelmed with all the various math choices we have as our online curriculum. Go Math, Think Central, iXL, with the resources of Khan Academy and Prodigy besides, and probably more websites that I have even listed here. Is this really the time to be spending money on a superfluous math program just because we know the developer? I would ask for caution to be exercised by our board. The responsibility of oversight of this budget is not a mean feat and should be handled with discretion. Especially now during this period of uncertainty, no one knows how long we will be distance learning or what the models for reopening will look like. Our priorities right now need to be health and safety and technological hardware. We have students who need headsets and hotspots. We need more consistency with Zoom reliability. Kids are constantly being kicked out of class and having to reenter. These concerns need to be addressed first. And speaking of health and safety, is our board aware that Adelanto COVID numbers are severely inflated for the area? And is there a plan for the measures to be taken when a COVID-infected staff member has encountered other staff members? Because this is a situation that has occurred and will likely continue to occur. Have you begun pricing the air filtration systems since so many of our older schools will need a complete overhaul? These are the decisions that have health implications, and they deserve your attention first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam President, can you hear me? I know this is out of context or out of order, but I did submit yesterday a request to address the board on an item agenda 13.01.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
This is Marie Calvo Roth, I'm a teacher in the district.
Okay, and
Madam President, we did receive that, but that is for an open session.
Oh, so would I be speaking or addressing the board tonight, senior or later?
Yes, when they reconvene the open session.
I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and so if we have no other speakers to address closed item, closed session items, we will move to item five to recess to closed session. Do we have a motion?
Oh, I motion, Ekas?
Okay, is there a second?
Benz, second.
I hear trustee Benz, a second. If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee Hines?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, we are recessed to closed session, the time is?
5:38.
Thank you, 5:30 PM.
Okay, we're ready when you are.
Okay, um, we're at six, we're at 6.001, call to ord, or order, can we please get a roll call?
Trustee Benz?
Benz is here.
Trustee Ekas?
Present.
Trustee La French?
Present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, present.
And I'll take note that trustee Hines left the meeting at 8:00 PM. And the time is 8:01.
Okay, so we have roll, roll call and quorum establishment at 8:01. So there was a close session report, I didn't take notes on that. Trustee Hines, go going to?
Can you read that readout, please, for the board?
I don't have it, that would have been taken in closed session with who voted, motioned, and second.
Yeah, I have that, but I'm talking about in terms of the readout. Dr. Williams, do you have the readout? Dr. Williams?
No, I don't have the readout.
Okay, you have the case number, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So the board took action in closed session to approve the settlement agreement number, read out the number, please?
For student ID number 332593.
Thank you. The motion was, the motion, we had a motion by trustee Benz, seconded by trustee Turner. All approved.
And, and, and the vote was Benz, aye, Ekas, aye, Turner, aye, La French, aye, and Hines, aye. So five to zero, zero.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are at 8.001, pub, public comment period, no, that's for closed session item.
Trustee Benz, no, you are correct, that was clerical, that is for open items, so at the time, yeah.
Okay, so it is pub, pub, public comm, comment period, period for open items and 8.2, odd audience members, I believe we do have one.
That is correct.
Ms. Marie?
Chris, do we, do we have the speaker?
Yes, we are ready when you are, Ms. Roth.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, Board of Trustees and Cabinet. My name is Marie Calvo Roth, and I am a mod severe teacher at Eagle Ranch School. My apologies again for my earlier interruption before closed session. I also saw that it was for closed session items after closed session, so I thought there was a mistake. On tonight's agenda item, 13.01 regarding school reopening, there are three models being presented, and I am concerned that Model A is being considered by Adelanto School District. Model A is a proposed hybrid graduated student return by program and loss of learning risk level. This model shows the mod severe students as the first group of students to return in our district. Unlike the TK to eighth grade gen ed students that would return at 20% of their class population per day, the chart does not show the mod severe students returning at that percentage. Yes, our class size may be smaller than most gen ed classes, but it's unrealistic to think that I could follow the guidances to keep the students in my classroom staff safe. How can I be expected to physically distance 13 students, paras, nurse, service support staff, and myself? My students are the least likely to tolerate wearing a mask. My students are the most likely to exhibit behaviors such as drooling, spitting, biting, hitting, and eloping. Many of my students are working on goals of toileting and feeding skills. Everything I just mentioned will require heightened supervision to keep my students distanced from each other and extra diligence to ensure that careful hygiene is practiced. With all these factors, why would it even be a consideration that we could return safely as an entire class? I know that the idea for returning the most acute students back to face-to-face instruction first began at the state level. What I don't understand is the continuing lack of the sense of safety for this group of students. Frankly, I resent the mod severe students being guinea pigs for the state of California or for our school district. I also resent that the mod severe students in Model A are not given the same consideration of returning to school at safer numbers. I urge you to please not consider Model A. It is not equitable for the mod severe students and staff at so many levels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvo Roth.
And I believe she was the, the only speaker at this time?
That is correct.
Okay, so now we're at 9.01, proceed, procedures for public hearing. Do I have to reread all that? Okay, 9.2, public hearing, should I reread that?
No, trustee Benz, this is approved resolution for sufficiency of instructional materials.
Okay, so 9.002, so it's the pub, public hearing, approved res, resolution, 200.21.07 for 2020 to 2021 sufficiency of instructional materials.
So we need to open up?
So we need to open that up for pub, public comment at 8:08.
Yeah, there you go. Chris, do we have any comments on the public hearing?
I don't have anybody that's requested to speak. If anybody would like to speak for public comment, if they would like to open up the participants list, and at the bottom, there is a check mark for yes, if you'd like to speak, if you can go ahead and click on that yes, I can unmute you in the order that you guys choose.
I don't see any raised hands.
Board members, can, can we bring up a discussion, or is it just for the pub, public?
The board can discuss as well.
So the board can discuss as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking.
I don't have any comments. Trustee Benz?
No public comments, trustee Benz.
Okay, so we'll go, go ahead.
Just requested, Jennifer Radar, so I can unmute if you guys are ready.
Okay.
Okay, Jennifer, if you can unmute yourself, we're ready when you are.
Okay, thank you. I understand in closed session, one of the things you were talking about was the Next Gen Program for math. And I'm not sure if everyone understands the history of Next Gen, but this was some years ago when we had Tim Madu at our district, and he, he passed away sadly, he's a very, very big loss to us. But Tim Madu and Aaron Walker together worked on, I think it was mostly Tim Madu's brainchild, though, it was, trying to think what the name it was back then. I just, it's on the tip of my tongue, but he created that whole program himself. And then after he passed away, it belonged to his brother, and his brother sold it to Aaron Walker, and she repackaged it and redesigned it so that it looked, it just looks better. It's less chalkboardy and it's more colorful. And so it is my personal opinion, I don't think it's really a personal opinion, I think it's kind of a, it poses a real conflict of interest because that program was developed with our brainpower on our hours here at AEST. It should belong, the rights should belong to us, if we want to use it, it should be something we get for free. It should be not something we pay $37,000 for or $54,000 for. It was developed right here in our district. And some people may not even realize that you haven't been here as long as I have to recognize that this program was developed by Tim Madu, and then taken appropriately, I'm sure, and legally, I'm sure, by, by Aaron Walker, and then developed into what she has now called Next Gen. So that's my little two cents worth on that point, and I hope that didn't fall on deaf ears. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I believe, okay, so the subject was the pub, public hearing of the approval of the res, resolution. So does anybody have any com, comment on this subject?
I do, I was wondering, in the past, we used to have the signature page of all the principals basically witnessing that they have everything. And I always know throughout the year, I always hear teachers and people telling me they don't have all their books and materials. So I don't know if that's an issue, if we were supposed to have a signature page, but I'm just gonna, you know, hope that we do have all our materials and everything's good to go. And if anybody has any complaints in the future, I hope that, you know, they will come to these type of things and, and say something, because it's really hard, you know, to hear after the fact that they didn't get all their materials or didn't have them. So I, I don't know, I guess my question is, was there supposed to be a signature page with all the principals approving?
There was one attached in the agenda, yeah.
Yeah, there is.
I didn't, I didn't get that.
Yeah, I, well, I did get my, mine on, online, and, and you click it, and I, you scroll, and, and it was, was there.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay, okay, because I get mine in hard copy, and I usually get everything, and I don't see a signature page. So I'll just go by what you, what you're all saying and hope for the best.
Yeah, it's right there, we're looking at, at it right, right now.
Yeah, I'm not on a computer, I just have my hard copy.
Yeah, I, I know, I'm, I'm just stating that it is being displayed at this time.
Okay, great.
And it was 158 pages, did you get that?
No.
Okay. Let's trust you, Turner, it's 158 pages, and you have teachers verifying it, and
Yeah, that's a lot of pages, I, they probably wanted to save a tree, so, so I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
And every school is certifying that.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion, pub, public comment? Okay, so I guess we, we can close it up at 8:14 PM. Okay, so then we're gonna go on to item 10, adoption of the
Did we have to vote on that?
We need to vote, trustee Benz.
Oh, we do, sorry, okay, let's take a vote, please.
So we need a motion and we need a second?
I motion to accept. Ekas?
Trustee Turner, second.
And can we take a vote?
If there's no discussion, I'll take the vote, trustee Benz?
Sorry. Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, passes for one, okay, so now we're on 10. Adoption of the min, minutes, 10.001, this is to approve as written and order filled, the regular board meeting of September 22nd, 2020. Can I get a motion to approve?
Ekas, my motion.
And can I get a sec, second?
La French, I second.
Okay. Okay, and any discussion? Okay, can I call for a vote, vote please?
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, it passes for zero. Okay, so now we're gonna go on to the, to item 11, the consent agenda. So, since I remember this, this is the one that wasn't planning on this, okay. We need to, are there any, 11, 11.2, do we waive the re, reading in full of all resolutions being considered on the pub, public agenda and deem each as having been read by the title?
So trustee Benz, you are taking items 1102 through 1120?
We are taking, I, I, I don't, I'm gonna write notes, so I can remember this stuff. Taking items 1102 to 11, what was it, 20.20?
Yes, I would like to pull 11.06 and 11.12.
Okay, 11.06 and 11.12?
I too would like 11.12.
Okay. Trustee Turner?
Um, I don't have any.
Okay. I don't have, and, no, no, actually I don't, I don't have none to pull, okay. So we want a mo, motion to, what's the wording, I don't have
To approve?
To approve, because that, agenda, genders, minus 11, 11.06 and 11, 11.12, so we will take 11.2.02 to 11.20, except though those two items.
You did good.
Trustee Benz, I motion that we approve the remaining consent agenda minus 11.06 and 11.12.
Thank you.
Ekas, my second.
Can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Ekas?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, now we need a motion to discuss item 11, 11.06.
I motion to discuss 11.06.
And board, 1106 and 1112 are related, we may want to talk about them both. 1106 is the professional development for 1112.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so I motion for 11.06 and 11.12 to discuss.
Trustee Turner, a second.
Okay, so I pulled this item because it is a great concern to me, and I've, I've heard lots of concerns every time this is brought up. It's my understanding that several of the schools have already bought the iXL program, they like it. There's lots of math programs out there, this one does have a history to it. I'm not gonna get all into that at, at this time, but I just, I'm just listening to what people are telling me, and I've heard from principals, I've heard from teachers. They, they're just not really interested in this program. And I want people to know that they can voice their concerns. I don't want people to feel like they have to accept a program that's being given to them or put on them. I want people to feel that they have a voice, and if they don't like a program, don't want a program, I want them to feel comfortable going to the superintendent, expressing to them either, you know, verbally, over the phone, you know, in person, a letter. If you want to remain anonymous, that's fine, but I really want people to be transparent and explain to us that they don't want certain programs in our district. I know you come to board meetings and you say things, but by then it's kind of too late. We're already voting on it, it's already in print, wheels are in motion. I'm under the impression that it's already been set up for it to, you know, the training is, is set up for next week, and the board hasn't even approved it yet. These things move very quickly, and I really want the public, or the teachers, parents, staff, anybody, to please voice your concern as soon as you see this, and as soon as you feel it's coming, anytime, please voice it to the superintendent, to board members, whoever you feel comfortable with, and let us know that you don't want certain programs in the district. and let us know that you don't want certain programs in the district. Once we get that information, we can go from there. Um I I saw this on the agenda, I addressed it. Um and from what I understand, two schools have pulled out uh since this has been put on the agenda. And I, you know, I thank you for doing that because you are expressing yourselves and letting us know how you feel. Um in the meantime, I'm I'm not gonna get all into this. It it'll take all night. But I just wanted to pull that. I wanted to explain that and really drive at home that we want that transparency. I know I do. And I think it's very helpful for people to come forward and express yourself again to the superintendent, to the board. Uh let us know how you feel about the programs that are being put in our district. Um having said that, I I have no other comment. I'm I'm ready to vote.
I I do have a comment. Um trustee Benz, uh tw- Dr. Williams, could you give us some background on next gen math? And the feedback that you're getting from uh teachers and principals regarding this program? And also talk about our test scores, um what our test scores look like in math? And uh why it's so critical that we have a good math program, you know, to.
Dr. Williams, before you address that, um board, I also wanna remind the the board that you asked us to look into uh you know, legal opinion as relates to conflict interest as well as intellectual property rights and so uh that 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 opinion um stated that we weren't in violation of conflict of interest or uh or or intellectual property rights in terms of having to engage the program and pay pay for the program um in terms of us being able to use a program without uh buying a subscription and license to use the program. So just wanted to form a reminder board of that. Uh also as well, I had an opportunity to um college for our principals about this program. The ones that we've pushed forward tonight have requested the use of this program. And so I I get that there's some controversy around the program. I've had a chance to look at it myself, support the program. I do know that its origins um has some history in this district. I I am very concerned about that as well, but I also am concerned that when I do hear positive uh information that principals are wanting to afford the program, that they're believing that will add value to their instructional program. I'm also I also really want to encourage site-based leadership. Um and where we're encouraging our principals to make the instructional and professional development decisions with their teachers um that they think are appropriate for their teachers, their schools, their context. And so I do like to support the aims and wishes of our principals who I consider CEOs of their schools and know their schools and their schools need more more intimately than any of us at the district office. And so uh these these schools that we have forward, I have personally spoken with and have they've indicated uh that they want to move forward with these programs. Uh but of course, it's all upon a board approval and happy to support our schools intent that way. But also know that there uh we do acknowledge and hear our teachers about the concern around the history of this program. But in terms of the quality of the program, uh the purpose of the program, I do think that it will add value in an environment where we have significantly depressed mathematics scores across our district, particularly at our C S I schools and I want to remind the board, this this program will be used at our C S I schools and our A T S I schools. We have been um highlighted by the state as ha- as as needing to make significant improvements in math. And we believe this among many other programs, as well as the high-quality teaching practices of our teachers uh can assist our schools and accelerate the performance of our math uh of our math achievement.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, uh trusty love French, do you have any com- comments?
Yes, I do. Um I wanted to know when it comes to choosing which um which one you're going to pick. Are the teachers included in that? Um how do you come up with? Because I don't understand um if we have if we have different platforms in place already, this platform is fifty thousand dollars. And how do we know whether or not if the platforms that we have already are actually being used? So then we pick up another one and um are they gonna are they gonna use it? Did they buy into it? How how do you know? You said for principals. How do you how do you know that this is what they want to use?
Well, I can't speak for what happened in the past, but I did speak to each of our principals that are on the list today in person, myself. And so they've been indicated that they want to integrate this into their instructional program. We 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 pay our principals to make those instructional decisions. Uh we hold our principals accountable for those instructional decisions. We expect that they involve their teachers in this discussion and that they make those decisions together. Our principals, in this case, have indicated a positive answer with that. And so I just uh this this uh agenda item is to support their efforts at the schools.
Do we poll the teachers? Because the teachers are the ones that's implementing it?
We rely on our principals to collect information and input and feedback for their teachers for their school. So we don't poll them at the district level, no, not not on this program in particular. And plus, it has not been it has not been implemented as yet, so we 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 don't have data to suggest that, yes, implementing this program accelerates test scores in this way.
But if you spend if you spend fifty thousand dollars on it, then how do we know that it's gonna work?
Uh we because it's a resource-based program, because it gives kids practice in 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 targets and claims in mathematics uh that that according to educational research, a focus on targets and claims in mathematics helps students um understand those and and master those those standards better. So in in the sense of it being a standards-based um research-based program, um we we know that those those things work with with students. So in general, um how how it's structured, uh the research supports it. Um and in practice, we'd have to pilot it and and see how it goes.
How many math programs do we have already?
Uh we we have several supplemental math programs. And we've had several supplemental math programs for over the years as well. Um and we're getting the kind of achievement that we're getting. So I I you know, I um I I I looked at the program. I'm confident that it will work if it's implemented well. That's why we want to have the professional development that goes along with it to uh assist teachers in learning to implement the program well. And and if it doesn't go well, we'll throw it out. I think that we need to do a program review across several programs because schools our schools, like all schools in 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 other districts, have had other math programs for years and and our achievement is what it is. And so um so there so sometimes there's not a problem with the program itself. Many times it boils down to poor implementation or 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 lack of rigor in implementation or sustainability in implementation. Some sometimes in education, we don't implement things rigorously enough or long enough to have an impact on student achievement because we tend to go from program to program to program. So I do clearly hear what you're saying, trustee La French, around programs jumping and program hopping. But but our teachers and principals are suggesting they wanna try this program out. I'm supportive of that. You can hold me accountable for holding our principals accountable for implementing uh this program fully and vetting it out and giving it an opportunity to make uh to make a impact in on student achievement, which it can do if it's implemented well.
Okay, I just have one more question. It appears that at the beginning, if you have three or four of them and you wanna add another one in there, why not replace it? Um take one out.
Well, you know, you you know, it also boils down to also what what teachers, if teachers are getting some great um great attraction with some of the programs they're using, we won't necessarily tell them that they can't use um uh programs. First of all, no one program can meet all student needs. And so having a a few tools in the toolkit for for teachers is important, as you know. And so um instead of, we are gonna go into a deep program evaluation across all of our programs. What's challenging right now is uh is uh just getting started, me myself, get just getting started in the district as well as uh we're being in distance learning. Uh so I think that now more than ever is the best time to pilot things. It's the best time to go deep on um instructional practices. As I've as I've formed the board, I put I've uh launched an initiative around each of our schools developing a very uh school-based and personalized professional learning plan that we're calling Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan. Our principals are considering this plan in 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 concert with their overall professional learning plan. And so um we we will be holding our our administrators responsible and accountable. Uh but we also want to give the leeway for schools to try new things and try new approaches and give those approaches a chance to take hold in terms of student achievement. So we just gotta wait and see, watch and see, and uh and then begin to uh to do some strategic abandonment of programs that aren't working. And we and there's a host of them, and this certainly might be one of them. Uh but we have we we have not tried it out to see yet, and so I'm supportive of the trial and the pilot of this program.
Okay, my last thing. When we're al- we're we're already going through um distance learning and going through computer issues and to add something else to the um platform that children try learn or the teachers try to teach them along with all the other stuff, I just think that um it's a bit much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I had another comment. Um again, I have heard from the teachers. I've heard from principals. They don't want any more new programs. They're they don't like us spending money on more programs. Um back in the day, there was a saying, you know, no more, enough is enough. Uh the teachers feel overwhelmed. They feel bombarded. Uh I can only imagine what they feel now with the with the COVID situation and having to do the online learning. Um bringing in a new program is a lot to ask of them. Um I wanna reiterate that we have fourteen schools and it's my understanding that only four of them are willing to do this program or are being told to do it. I don't know. I only know what I'm being what I'm being told. Um this is just not a program that people in our district are real excited about or want. And I think it's sad that we're gonna spend that kind of money and push it on them. Um I'd also like to know who brought this program to our district. Um this has been uh floating around our district for a long time, even before the new superintendent. Um and you know, there's been lots of little question marks around it. And I'm just saying, if if we're getting people saying they don't want another program, they don't want this program, I don't understand why we're like forcing it or why we're pushing it. And it is another program. It's more money and we're just adding more to the situation of the online learning with the COVID situation. So for me, as as just, you know, a board member, a parent, a layman, it just seems like too much. And it I just don't think the timing's right. And uh again, I I believe in listening to the public and our teachers about how they feel about another program, spending a bunch of money and trying to fit something in that, again, only four of our schools out of fourteen are interested in. They've bought in the X L program. They seem to like that. I I don't know. I I I don't know. But anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I I do have some comments. Um I I was here with when Tim McDou and Aaron Walker and Holly was here too. And at the time, you know, our district was experiencing low test scores in math. When this program was implemented, I don't know if this is the same program. I cannot adhere to that. I don't know. I do know that Aaron Walker worked on it with Tim McDou and Dr. Dan Rowley. Our our we had the highest gains in the state. Our math scores went out the roof. Right now, our math scores are the lowest in the high desert. Our kids deserve better than that. Uh we do have a lot of math programs. We have a lot of math programs. And I agree, we need to look at those programs to see if they're effective and and should we still be offering those programs to our students? Um I had some concerns with some of the math programs, you know, with my grandchildren in the district. However, you know, these this program next gen math was piloted uh last year. And from what I understand and from what the superintendent at that time said that and the chief academic officer, it was amazing. And uh the superintendent and the chief personnel officer sat in on the presentation and asked questions, I mean, really technical questions about the process of s- next gen math. And they were able to answer them. And so I believe that when we're in the tank right now, our kids deserve better than that. We're in the business to educate our kids and give our kids the best education possible. And I'm really tired of our district being being labeled as you you don't wanna go to that district. They're not providing the best education possible. When you get our math scores in the red for the past couple of years, that's that's just unacceptable. And we have to do something to improve educating our students. Math is very critical for our students. And it's not just the math that we grew up on, you know, it's the different math that, you know, they're not adding and subtracting the way that we, I'm just using that as example, division, multiplication, there is different. You know, I can solve a question, a problem, and I could come up with the same answer, but it's a different format to that question. Some children are visual. Some children look at a problem different ways. I don't know. I haven't set in on what next gen math is, but I do know and I do believe that we need, we we deserve to give our children better. We just can't keep going with status quo and think that things are gonna change. We have to make a difference. And if it doesn't work, then we know that we need to get rid of it. We need to get rid of some of these others that's not working.
Okay, thank thank you. Um I heard good things about it. I mean, it it's all red, ready in some some of our our schools. And when I asked the the pre- previous su- su- superintendent, she went on about how, you know, that the prin- principals likes liked it. And we were supposed to e- expand it to help the kid, those schools that had the the low ma- math scores. And then this 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 con- conflict of interest thing came up, then it didn't come up when we vote voted the pa- pastime. And you know, I just I just want the kids to to improve, you know? Let's and and I know it's not like, oh, let's just waste money. No, let's see, see if it works, you know? There are programs at my work that at first I didn't like them. It's like, great, more stuff. But now because of this distance learn and learning, I've learned, oh, I like like this. It helps with the async synchronous learn learning. So I'm, you know, that's my point. So, okay, so let's go to twelve.
Another question. Is this coming out? This is coming out. Could you explain what the S, what is that, the S?
S C C um C.
CSI and and A T S I are the state's new accountability system. It's it's similar to program improvement and I U S P and all the other kinds of accountability programs. There are very, uh there are parameters that qualify schools for extra funds and support when they don't meet particular subject area of standards or uh or student group of standards. And so so our schools have been, some of our schools have been identified as C S I by the state and A T S I by the state uh to to target funds um to direct professional development and program improvement. So we have to spend these dollars on those schools to accelerate performance.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Mitra.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead. I need a mo- motion to approve the um the I I I Dums eleven eleven point zero six and eleven point twelve from the consent agenda can can I have a mo- motion, please?
Trustee Benz, we do. We have a motion from La French and a second by trustee Turner.
So we judges need need a vote?
Correct.
Yay, okay, can I have a vote, please?
Trustee Benz.
Ben's eye.
Trustee Eckes.
No.
Trustee La French.
Yes.
Trustee Turner.
I, trustee Turner, I.
Okay, thirty one. Okay, so now we move on to thirteen staff re- reports and presentations. Thir- thirteen point zero zero one, re- re- opening. Thir- thirteen point zero zero one, re- reopening schools?
Uh, thank you, trustee Benz. Uh, board, I've, uh, after, after your request, uh, you asked me to provide an update to the board and the community and our thoughts around reopening. Uh, you noted that many of our, our local peers and districts and across the country has, uh, begun reopening efforts. And so I just wanted to take tonight to, uh, take a few minutes to walk you through uh, where we are in terms of COVID, in terms of our area and county and, and, uh, region, as well as our district. And then walk you through, uh, the conversation that we're having with our, with our teachers and our classified staff around, uh, different models that we may consider to, to reopen. When and if the conditions are support reopening. So I'm gonna share my screen, um, and share a PowerPoint and, uh, let's see, get rid of this. Sorry, let me go back to the top, there you go. So tonight's reopening, uh, more presentation is on, is on our reopening, uh, and up, update. And so I want to begin by reiterating for board and the community that when I, uh, started here, uh, we were in the midst of still shut, shutting down. Uh, we were ramping up to start the school year. And, uh, we created these school reopening core values as we were developing our plans for distance learning. I wanna review those because these serve as our North Star. These serve as our district's community, to our staff, to our students and to our community around how we will have these conversations. And so these core values anchor our work. And so I just wanted to revisit those to ensure the reopening of our schools safely as well as provide a high quality instructional program. We will number one, adhere to COVID nineteen sixty guidelines to protect the health, safety and wellness of students and staff. Number two, identify and develop supports to meet the social and emotional needs of students and staff. Number three, provide school leaders, teachers and support staff with training. Resources and supports to successfully implement a high quality instructional program. And four, provide differentiated instructional supports to meet the needs of all students. And number five, provide timely, transparent and informative communication to staff, parents, community members related to COVID nineteen and school reopen. So I re, I re, I reiterate those because we need to really, we need to have a standard by which we even consider these things. And you'll find that number one is the biggest standard that we, um, are only considering or will only consider bringing staff and students back in any model, only if and, um, only when and if, um, our, our COVID safe, we meeting the safety guidelines as prescribed by, uh, the state of California, uh, the San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools Office and the San Bernardino County Public Health Department uh, before we would consider. But what, what you'll see tonight, board and community, and I wanna say this super clearly so everyone hears that, uh, we are having the discussion. We were, we are involving our full community as well as our teachers and classified staff. That what the models that you see tonight are just strictly for discussion. That if we had to reopen slowly, like, what hybrid model would we consider? And one of the things that we're doing is meeting, um, with our, with our, uh, we, we have a joint cabinet as ADTA and CSEA, uh, meeting where we've been discussing this. We'll send out surveys to our teachers and our classified staff. And starting on October twentieth, we'll be meeting with our, uh, parents around their, uh, around their thoughts and input feedback on how we might reopen or, or what conditions would they, uh, consider safe to send their children. Uh, they're, they're our most precious resource to our, to our schools, uh, in a safe manner. And so, uh, after that, board, uh, we would go to the bargaining table and, and work out MOUs that support the, uh, model that we would choose to implement. And then at that point, we will wait and see, uh, for when the conditions are, are, uh, are allowed for our schools to reopen. So, so, so board, this planning and these discussions is in, is in a, is in an effort to be prepared to reopen and certainly is not a suggestion that we reopen, like, especially given our current, um, our current dilemma as it relates to COVID. So I'm gonna ask, um, our, our public information officer, Ms. Quintero, to walk the board and community through uh, where we currently stand in terms of our state, county, regional and district as, as it relates to COVID nineteen rates. Ms. Quintero?
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and, uh, thank you, board trustees, for having me tonight. Um, so I've been studying the California state data as well as San Bernardino County and that of our regions, the Adelado Elementary School District region. Um, as most of us know, uh, the county is still in a tier one situation, uh, widespread. We also have an issue with our testing positive rate. Uh, and over the past two weeks, we've had a five point seven. But every Tuesday, um, new data comes out. So this afternoon, uh, the state and county published new information. So our testing positive rate has moved from a five point seven to a six point four. Uh, so it's moving in the wrong direction, just so you know. And then the daily new cases, uh, for seven point seven, um, again, we moved in the wrong direction. And today's numbers, it came out to nine point six. So we're now at five weeks, uh, where we're in tier one, which is the purple widespread COVID. Um, and I'll also point out some situations where they're, uh, they would consider out, uh, outbreaks in our region. Um, so our status would be still full distance learning, um, as recommended, uh, by the state and the county. And at no means do we have any way of meeting any, uh, red for the two week status. If you're familiar with the, uh, uh, I've looked at the California data website. Uh, you'll notice that they have a chart which is four different colors. So they'll ha- have the, uh, purple widespread, they'll have the red substantial, and they'll have the yellow for moderate and, uh, Dr. Mitchell, you can select, yeah, there you go. And, uh, orange for moderate, sorry, and the yellow is minimal. So at this time, uh, our adjusted cases are in the widespread and our sys- uh, and our, uh, uh, substantial is for the positivity rate. And again, both of those moved in a direction we do not want to, to go. Also, you always hear that it takes two weeks of analysis of data. It's actually a full three weeks, uh, being that today, Tuesday, we will not see new numbers until next Tuesday. So that actually constitutes, uh, one of the three weeks. If we happen to be a substantial, um, with adjusted cases and positivity rate, then we need to do it for two weeks from next week, uh, which would be the thirteenth. Uh, so that, you know, uh, so we still have a long way to go in regards to this. As far as the next slide goes, uh, I've been keeping track and I will continue to keep track every Tuesday. So for example, this was the previous two weeks of data, um, where we had an increase from six point four to seven point oh. And just like, and that's for the state of California. And just, you know, the state bumped up to seven point one today. So it went up a tenth of a point. So even though we're hearing good things, it's not, uh, in regards to the state, um, we're still not close to, uh, uh, lowering the numbers statewide. Uh, and the next slide, uh, for San Bernardino, uh, this is what I was talking about. So we started off with the six point seven September twenty-first, and we moved into that seven point seven. And like I said, as of today, we're at a nine point six. So we took a substantial jump in San Bernardino County. Uh, there's no, uh, clarification on reasons. Some people might say it's more testing, some people might say the Labor Day weekend. Um, but there's nothing that I've read just yet where they've had research to provide us why it's had such a substantial jump. Um, and the next slide, the, uh, uh, I talked about the Adelado Elementary School District. Well, the San Bernardino County, uh, Public Health has a great website and they've broken the region down by school districts. And as you can see, uh, September sixth to the twelfth, uh, we were only at four daily cases. And then through, not, the thirteenth through the nineteenth, we jumped to twenty daily cases. Uh, so we were going through an outbreak situation in, within our region. And that region obviously is the Adelado Elementary School District region. I do wanna point out some numbers for our particular region. So the next slide, what I looked at was different school districts. Um, just, if I, oh, we can leave, that's fine. So I looked at like school districts with population in the region, uh, compared to Adelanto. So for example, Altaloma Elementary School District, they have a population of fifty-five thousand people. And they have forty-one cases of, uh, youth cases. That means children from five to nineteen years of age. Now, Adelanto has sixty-one thousand five hundred thirty-five for their population, but our youth cases are one eighty-four. Um, so we're, uh, you know, almost, uh, quadruple the number of, uh, compared to Altaloma. If I looked at Upland Unified School District, they have seventy-seven thousand in their population. Um, they have a hundred and twenty-two cases. And if I look, look at Yucipa Calamasa, they have sixty-two thousand in their population. And they have eighty-four youth cases ages five to nineteen. So on this particular slide and website, on the left-hand side, just, you know, are all the school districts. So Adelanto is actually in blue, but it tells us the number of cases and it also will tell us the number of youth ages. So I ki- kinda have gone through and reviewed those things. If you wanted to know a little bit about like our local district, um, s- uh, school partners, like Victor Elementary School District, uh, they have a hundred and four thousand people in their population and they have two hundred and fifteen youth cases. Um, Hesperia Unified School District, a hundred and seven thousand people, two hundred and sixty-one youth cases. And Apple Valley has eighty-two thousand people, a hundred and nine, uh, cases. So our region is definitely higher than the rest of the region in San Bernardino County. And I will continue to break down these numbers and, and look at adjustments and see what the trends are. So that way, we can keep you guys up to date on the situation at hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, I hear a dog out there. Thanks so much, uh, Ms. Quintero. So, so board, as you can see, um, and, uh, our, our no- our numbers are, are, uh, are really, uh, floating up and going upwards in the wrong direction. And so, um, just as we were talking about, we want to consider some models for reopening. Uh, we're nowhere near being able to reopen in any way, uh, right now. Uh, just according to the numbers, uh, you see that we're in the middle of what the, what the county, uh, Public Health is calling an outbreak. Adelanto itself, Adelanto Elementary School District, I'm not even talking about, you know, Kappa Sigma. I'm saying Adelanto Elementary School District, District is in the midst of an outbreak. And so, again, I wanna reinforce that we, we want to focus on preparedness. We wanna make sure that our, uh, that if we do reopen, we have, uh, we've thought through, uh, personal protective equipment, uh, transportation implications, classroom implications. And to, and to Ms. Calvo Ross, uh, uh, point tonight around, uh, social distancing, um, i- appropriate to any size or any level of classroom. And so we're, so we're thankful for Ms. Calvo Ross, uh, uh, comments tonight. So I just wanna show you that, oh, wow, okay. It looks like this, uh, thing didn't translate over well into, into, uh, uh, Google. The, there, there are words inside the boxes to the right. So I will, I do know what they are, so I'll just kinda walk them through. And so, so board, we, we've developed actually five models. Three models are hybrid and two models are, uh, non-hybrid. Um, I think that, um, it's, it's extremely difficult for us to consider any non-hybrid model. Meaning it would probably be too challenging for us to consider a full student return with no online. And so what you'll see here tonight are three models and I may, I may just have to pull up the PowerPoint because it doesn't look like it translated well with my, my deal here. Give me one second, board, I'm gonna pull up the PowerPoint just on my computer so I can make sure I can tell you um, exactly what's in those boards that are blank, I apologize. I, we did print you out a copy and so if you have your copy, you have that. I'm just concerned about the public not being able to see, so I apologize, public. So I'm just Google Zoom, and so let me get, I'm gonna, okay. So here, here is the, here is the, the overall thought. Is that, uh, districts are looking at reopening, but keeping a hybrid model. And here, and so, and here's, um, kind of the, uh, thought behind that. We want to maintain a hybrid model throughout this entire pandemic. The reason is, is this, is that we've invested a lot of time, dollars. Uh, our teachers have spent a huge amount of time, uh, retooling themselves and getting prepared uh, to, to, as we heard from another teacher earlier, that they've learned some new skills in a short amount of time. We're really proud of the efforts that our teachers and administrators have made. Our, our, our district office administrators have supported, support staff have supported our teachers learning this new model of how to teach online. And so a hybrid model will always, uh, keep online, a piece of our day being online. And that in the afternoon, if we were able to return, we would be able to bring back, we would consider bringing back small numbers of kids. So this first model A thinks about bringing, bringing back kids according to a graduated or according to their program, or those kids most at risk for loss of learning or those kids, um, that we are most concerned about in terms of distance learning. You'll see that the first tier is special education. Uh, this Calvo Wright Ross was, did voice concern about bringing back our Ma Severe. Uh, even, even, you know, classrooms with twelve or fifteen kids in it with the support staff would be challenging. And so we would, it's not, it's not listed here, but we would consider a percentage of those kids coming back. But we think in terms of risk level, that our highest risk level for kids not, um, being able to get their needs met through distance learning would be our, would be our special education students. Uh, then would be our, in, our second tier, the second box would be our English language learners, levels one and two. Those are our, those are our kiddos that are, are learning to speak E- uh, English, reading, writing, uh, in English at the earliest levels. And then that third box board would be our transitional kindergarten, our kindergarten and our, our grade, our grade one. And so we would consider bringing those kids back twenty percent a day. And then grades two to five is twenty percent per day, and grades six through eight is twenty percent per day. One of the things that we have to consider, board, is because, uh, the number of our, great number or percentage of our children ride the bus. We, we'd have to consider lowering the numbers as much as possible to be able to transport them safely to our schools. And you'll see that not only do we need to consider, uh, having low enough kids to be able to manage uh, in the classroom to do social distancing, we'd also have to consider, uh, being able to transport, uh, bringing able to transport students in a, um, in, in a safe manner as well. So thanks so much for bringing this PowerPoint up, whoever did it, thank you very much. Um, going down to the next slide. So model B is still a hybrid where we would teach in the morning, do a hybrid model. And that we would bring twenty-five percent of our kids back, um, uh, in the afternoon, four days a week. And then we'd spend one day with teachers collaborating. So it would look like something like, hey, kid, twenty-five percent of your kids come back Monday and on the twenty-five, a different twenty-five percent Tuesday, a different twenty-five percent Wednesday and different, and a last twenty-five percent Thursday. And then Friday, we would spend the day, uh, conducting professional learning, teacher collaboration, teacher planning, IPs, all those kinds of other school business that teachers are busy with that make us successful. And, and, um, and so the, the issue here would be, the twenty-five percent would be kinda hitting our max uh, in terms of student transportation, but it would give us a full day of planning. Uh, the next model, if you can forward that, thank you. Model C is the same, is the same model as B, but it's twenty percent per day, but it's five days a week. And we would consider a half day or maybe two half days in the morning, um, for professional collaboration and professional learning and all the other kinda teacher business that we handle, uh, without kids. And so these three models, board, uh, as well as the two, we have two additional models that aren't hybrid, that only consider full return. We're, we're thinking that those models aren't even, um, it's probably not worth our time to even look at at this point. But we still need to consider that if COVID disappeared tomorrow and we wanted to open slowly in a non-hybrid model, that a full school return, but we need to consider what model we would use for those returns. And so, um, our next steps, uh, the next slide, please. Thank you. Our next steps was number one, uh, as Ms. Quintero said earlier, that we're gonna continue to closely monitor COVID nineteen rates for the state, county, region and the district. Uh, uh, as we stated earlier, these rates come out every Tuesday. Uh, we are, uh, we are, in terms of COVID safety guidelines, we are not allowed to open according to the, uh, Department of San Bernardino, San Bernardino, uh, County Department of Health when we're in purple or widespread. So right now, we are not even permitted to open and we should only be doing distance learning, which we are. We are in compliance with the state as well as the county, uh, superintendent schools as well as our San Bernardino County Public Health. Number two, uh, continue to mon- monitor guidance on school reopening. So there's all this guidance that's coming out from various entities that, that, um, from various entities that that talk about how to successfully open, how to safely manage schools, how to safely social distance. And so we're monitoring that. I'm in meetings every week. My staff is in meetings every week, both county, county meetings, state meetings, public health meetings, county superintendent schools meeting. And plus, I'm in a superintendent's group and talking with my peers in the high desert, as well as my peers throughout San Bernardino County. And last week, we had a joint San Bernardino County and Riverside County superintendent's meeting. So I am hearing all of the models that my peers are using and the success they're having or lack of success they're having. We're also watching closely of the schools that the districts are that are reopening around the country and some of the challenges that they're having. Number three, is that we're going to continue to gather input on school reopening models from our union leaders during the joint cabinet and union leaders meeting. I committed to our CSEA and ADTA partners that this would be a a joint decision that we would make collectively and together, that that I would not sit in a in a in my office and make you know, a lot of decisions that affects people's safety and lives. And that I we desperately want anything that we do to have the fingerprint of our teachers and our classified staff, as well as our parents on their last or yesterday, or maybe yesterday, the day before. We ask kids how they're feeling about it. So we're also getting data from kids. We're going to send out a survey. We have another meeting, joint cabinet and union leaders meeting on Thursday, this this week, in which we will finalize and kick the tires on these models and then send out a survey to all teachers, to all classified staff, because everybody's impacted by this decision. Our secretaries, our custodial staff, our administrators are all impacted by these decisions. And so therefore, one of our core values is involving the people in the decisions that affect them. And so we'll send out a survey instrument after we meet on Thursday and finalize the models that we would want people's input and feedback on. Again, as I said earlier, we're going to engage parent input and feedback during upcoming supper with superintendent. So a little tagline that I stole from our our friend over in Victor Valley, Dr. Williams. Kind of gave me the idea of the supper with the superintendent. And it's a little joke between us because he asked me, hey, he said, hey, you can, you can call it anything you want. And I said, sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it what you call it. So we're having supper with the superintendent meetings beginning October twentieth. And basically what that is, is that we've clustered our schools into four kind of clusters. And so we'll hold a parent meeting involving those site leaders of those schools. So so three or four schools maybe on one night, where we would invite those parents and share them many elements of the PowerPoint that you're looking at tonight, and just open it up and ask them their feedback and say, hey, how how confident, how confident are you in 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 your ability to send your kids, like, would you send your student to school under these conditions? I really want to hear from parents. We also know that we, according to our principles, we're only getting probably seven to twelve percent of our parents participating. We also are going to push for Ares Portal, really, really pushing to get some higher student, uh, parent engagement. And we know that this issue is highly important to our parents. Of course, the safety of their children is about most important to our parents. And we certainly want to get their feedback and input. Number six, after we've gotten feedback from our parents, our school leaders, our classified staff, our teachers, and in the board, of course, and we choose a model or models that we might consider, we'll go back to the bargaining table to develop appropriate MOUs to support the model or models that we would implement if we were to reopen. And so our thought is that, hey, if this thing opens up tomorrow, that we want to be prepared in terms of the MOUs in place and the and the personal protective equipment in place and all the logistics in place. And so I'm having our team push on this as though we are opening next week to answer many of these logistical questions around transportation and nutrition and social distancing and who's taking temperatures and who's who's doing all that kind of stuff. So that way we can be, we can stand ready to open if we had to open. And then number seven, of course, as I spoke of, are many operational issues that we that that come to bear when we consider reopening. And so we're going to make sure that we go through all of the transportation, school sanitation and cleaning, social distancing. And then also, you know, how do we respond to active case protocols? We've gotten our share of that recently. And so we need to make sure that those protocols are 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 clear and concise and that and our folks know how to respond in this environment. With that, board, happy to take any questions or feedback or input into these planning efforts. And so thanks for your time.
Okay, are there any any ques- questions from the trustees?
Yeah, I had a question. Several days ago, I asked if I could get information that I've heard that the county preschools and state preschools are wide open. It's been advertised on the radio many times. They're open a full day, half a day, just completely open. And so I'm kind of wondering what's the answer to that. Is it true? It must be if I heard it on the radio. I don't know. I didn't get any feedback. And so I it it contradicts what we're reading in this report, that we're in this high, you know, level and it's just really bad and everything, but yet they're welcoming all these little kids into the state and county preschools. So I'm confused. I don't understand that. And don't get me wrong, I know we've got a bad situation here. But again, I was curious about that information because it it just doesn't make sense to me. Why would they open up state and county preschools wide open for little kids so parents can go back to work or whatever? But yet we're being told, oh, no, it's the worst of the worst. You you can't put schools back in. Students are not coming back to school. I don't understand that. Can someone explain that to me?
Yeah, be happy to, trustee Eckes. And so our state and county preschools are in distance learning like we are. We also have many private and charter schools that have requested waivers for for preschools and daycares. And so there are some daycares open, there are charter schools open, there are some some of our local, our peers who are in really remote areas are are open for preschool, daycare, as well as and and then some of our special education programs that service infants, toddlers, and preschool-aged children are open at the county level as well. So so that is true. There are many things. There are most of our programs, even at the county preschool, state level are online. Some are open that are serving. I sent you some information to speak more that we will begin transporting our special education early learners to county programs that are opening up in person. So that is true and accurate. The things that that makes that that grows the complexity for us is the number of students that we have, the the number of children that we transport, and 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 just the the sheer numbers that that would mean for us if we were to reopen in the model.
Okay, so you're saying it's mostly transportation. If transportation wasn't an issue, we would be doing in-person learning like what they're doing with the preschool children?
No, because when you have, when you have smaller age groups, you're able to apply for waivers that lets you kind of waive the fact that we're in purple and a widespread piece. And so no, some of those, some of those waivers, we would not be eligible to apply. Because we offer, we offer more, we offer more grades than just preschool.
Yeah. And and before, you know, many times during our board meetings, I've made the comment that my main concern is those parents that need to go back to work. And is there a way we can create a hybrid model for those type of situations where parents have to go back to work? And when I heard these state and county preschools are open, they're understanding the need, they're they're experiencing that, they're making a way so that these little kids can be in a facility while their parents go back to work. My concern is our kindergartners and the little ones that can't be home alone, and those parents need to go back to work. And I was hoping we would be looking at some type of way we can help those type of situations where these kids are latchkey kids, they're home alone, they're not learning. You know, I hate to bring it back, but this, you know, generation math thing. Again, these kids are, the the teachers are overwhelmed with trying to teach these kids in distance learning or throw in more programs. The kid's going to be rougher on the kids. I don't, I don't see our test scores coming out good at all after this COVID situation. I don't see it happening for anybody in any district, in any state. This is a whole new thing that we're dealing with. It's not easy. I would be very surprised if kids are actually really soaking in and learning, having to deal with being at home in front of a computer, not being able to engage in person. That's where I'm concerned. I feel that these kids are really just going to be like suffering for a whole year of of this COVID situation and not learning. So to me, it's 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 overwhelming. It really is. And I'll be surprised to see at the end of the year what our test scores really are, if kids really learned anything. Because I can't imagine a kindergartner, a first grader, but a third grader sitting home in front of a computer twenty-four seven and just not learning.
Sorry, excuse me, trustee Eckes. I I just want want us to 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 be be aware that that the time time is nine thirteen, and we we still have the the RFPs for the the attorney. So so if the trustees can please be mindful of the time thing, please.
Yeah, I knew tonight was going to be a long meeting. I don't know if we need to table anything, but anyway, I I think you all get my point. So I'm I'm good.
Okay, are there any other trustees?
I did have comments, but I I think that due to the time, you know, I'll I'll table those comments for later.
Okay, trustee La French?
I will table mine as well because we don't have the ability to open up anyway right about now. So I'll save mine till then it's time.
And and I will ta- table mine as well. This can come, you know, because it doesn't look like we're going to o- open and anytime soon. So so we're good. Okay, so we need a vote to approve.
That was just trustee Bentz. That was the presentation. Yes, but it is, it is nine thirty or nine fourteen. So does the trustees want to extend the meeting? Because we do have some several items still.
Um, I I think we need to extend it because we do have a attorney's here who are presenting. So they've been.
Is there anything we can table?
We can ta- table the 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 approval for the fourteen point zero 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 two for fourteen point zero three. Can can that that be be tabled or do do we need that now?
Yeah, fourteen oh three is 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 a priority item.
Okay, so can we then ta- table fifteen point zero zero one and fifteen point zero two?
We certainly, yeah, we certainly can.
Okay, so we'll ta- table those and we'll table fourteen point zero zero two.
Okay.
And you can, yeah.
And then so we'll we'll go go to thirteen point zero zero two presentation of legal counsel firms for the board, board of trustees.
Trustee Bentz, before we do that, I want to motion that we extend the meeting an additional fifteen, twenty minutes if we need to. Just in case presentations go longer than fourteen minutes, which I'm sure that they will. So that's that we table the meeting, that we extend the board meeting for an additional twenty minutes. So we'll adjourn at nine fifty instead of nine.
Okay, so we we have a a mo- motion to 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 extend the meet meeting for an extra twen- twenty min- minutes to end at nine fifty. And can I bundle in in there to ta- table fif- four fourteen point two fif- fifteen point zero zero one and fif- fifteen point zero zero two?
Yes.
Okay, so we're we're going to.
Trustee Bentz, my apologies. We we do need to adopt and approve fifteen point oh two. It's related to a federal program monitoring finding around our board policy for foster youth. If we can continue that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so we will not ta- table fifteen point zero two.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so just to be clear, we're going to ta- table for fourteen point zero two and fif- fifteen point zero one. Okay.
End the meeting for an additional twenty minutes.
And extend it for twenty min- minutes. And we have a mo- motion from trustee Turner, and I need need a sec- second. I sec- second. Can we get a vote, please?
Trustee Bentz.
Bentz, aye.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, if we go for zero zero and we'll extend until nine fifty. Okay, now we can go to thirteen point zero zero two. Presentation of league.
Oh, oh.
Council firms of the board of trustees.
Thank, thank you so much. I apologize. So so board, per your request for the board to retain legal counsel, we've we've put an RFP out. And so Mr. Kraus will walk us through what's before you tonight. So, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and good evening, members of the board. This evening, we had, as Dr. Mitchell stated, we had submitted an RFQ to firms to solicit legal counsel for the board. There were two firms that met the deadline of two P M, Dolan Tucker Tierney and Abraham, and Olivares Madruga Lemieux and O'Neal. This morning, Dolan Tucker Tierney and Abraham had pulled out without explanation. They apologized, but said that they respectfully had bowed out of the consideration for the board. And so this evening, we have Mr. Madruga with Olivares, Madruga, Lemieux and O'Neal with us this evening. And he will be presenting a short slideshow on his firm. So if you will tee up Christie's slideshow, there we go. And Mr. Madruga, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk briefly about your firm.
Great. Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity. With me tonight is Adrianne Connermacker. She works on our educational law practice, as well as Inez Cooper Schmidt, who really heads up our special education department. Be happy to, you know, answer any questions or they will be as we articulate through this. Let me just move through this. I'm not sure if I can.
So Mr. Madruga, just let the person know when you want to move to the next slide. He'll he'll move it for you.
Okay, sure. Why don't we do that now? So yeah, so we have about forty-one full-time attorneys. Our practice is really divided up into really diverse departments. We are in, I think, seven cities where we operate as the actual city attorney on a contract basis. We are general counsel, I think, to probably eight or nine school districts. We also operate as general counsel to, boy, I don't, I'm not sure the number of water districts. Steve Lemieux, Steve O'Neal head up our water law practice. And then we have a litigation component where we have about twelve to fourteen full-time litigators. And we represent school districts, municipalities. We represent the Los Angeles Community College School District. We represent LA Unified School District. And that's a host of litigation matters from, you know, purse matters, nineteen eighty-three civil rights claims, FIA claims, discrimination claims, tort claims, and the like. I think we could probably move to the next slide. This is just some of the services that we provide through our practice about California. I mean, I mentioned some of these, but you know, we, as general counsel and as work as a special ed department, you know, we work really closely with districts. Some like more hands-on. work really closely with districts. Some like more hands-on approach, others give us work on an assignment-type basis. So it really depends on what you guys want. We'll tailor our, um, practice or business model to your needs. Uh, everyone has different ideas about, uh, you know, how they wanna use their attorneys. We like to keep ourselves involved in really the legal matters because the, you know, it gets costly. And we, we understand that, uh, you know, fees and expenses are, you know, paramount concern. So we like to really give the staff the tools to really do most of their job and really weigh in on the things that are legal. So, I wanna move on to the next slide. This slide is just a list of the schools that we operate as general counsel or in some fashion as special counsel. Um, Elmani, we're general counsel. Linwood, we're special counsel. Comptunified, we're sort of a hybrid role. Uh, we do all of their special education work and charter school work. A lot of their police backs, they do, they are one of the school districts that has their own in-house police department, which, uh, in these times is challenging. LA Community College School District, we do litigation for them and defend them in a whole host of types of matters. LA Unified, we do their tort and construction law work. Sentinel Valley, we're general counsel. Rio Honda, special counsel. Inglewood, we do litigation for them. And I think Lenox, Montebello, we're general counsel and also special education counsel. Uh, same with Rosebead and Alliance for Schools. That's a skip. That's the litigation panel that we defend school districts. To the next slide. Um, this is just some of the areas of expertise that we bring. We talked about, most of them are ready. And as is here, she can weigh in as, you want to maybe now, Inez, talk about some of the special education work that our group does.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you all for being with us tonight. Um, we provide a full spectrum of special education services, including counsel and advice to directors of special education. We represent districts in due process hearings, whenever there's a due process complaint filed against a district, as well as in IPs, mediations, and all the way up through the lifecycle. So we try to get involved as early as is possible to prevent the issues. But of course, if, if it does become contentious, then we can represent throughout the entire lifecycle, including Office of Civil Rights complaints, California Department of Education complaints. And I, I imagine you are most familiar with the due process complaints that are sometimes filed. So on an average year, we probably do over a hundred due process complaint defenses across the LA County area for a variety of different school districts. And I'm happy to answer any more questions about, about that work.
Yeah, and then, you know, one of the things that we get asked a lot to do, and it's, uh, it's very important because you really, the, the best way to deal with litigation is to not consider. And the best way to do that is really train staff and administrators on some of the do's and don'ts within the district. We do a lot of in-house training for, you know, sexual harassment, sexual discrimination, title, title nine issues. We do a full complement of Brown Act training for, you know, board members and others. So, um, we find those to be very useful and instructive to staffs within districts because, uh, you can never know enough about what you should be doing and not be doing. And it changes, it changes regularly. So, uh, even if you had that kind of training, there's always updates that I think are very useful to, you know, your staff. So that's something that we, we do a lot of, and I think we get asked to do a lot of for the obvious reason.
And I think one of the most important things that we do is board governance. Uh, this is Adrian Congar Macklin, and good evening to everyone. I'm so happy that we were able to be here tonight and to share our expertise with you. Board governance is one of the practice areas where there's a tremendous expertise in our firm that runs throughout all of the specialties and areas of expertise. Uh, for me, as counsel to this particular firm, I specialize in board governance and have had over thirty-three years of practicing with various school districts throughout Los Angeles County and San Diego County with a specific emphasis on board governance, board rules, board training, and, uh, board mediations. I think that, uh, given what you've asked for and the information that you receive, that our firm is very well-suited to provide advice and to serve the board in that capacity or any other capacity. I think it's really important that when we talk about board governance, that you have counsel that is also well-versed in other areas. So that if you have a question, no matter what it is, we're capable of answering it in a very concise and thorough way without having to look at outside counsel or anyone else for advice on the things that we do. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
I, I had a question for, for Adrian. Um, Adrian, I'm a little confused. When we hired you several months ago, you were your own law firm. What happened? Did you stop that? And now you joined a bigger law firm? I'm, I'm a little confused.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Eckes. It's good to speak to you.
Hi.
Um, it can be a little confusing, but I have been with this firm for a number of years as special counsel with them. And given the RFP and the requirements that you had, I thought it was better to approach this through my relationship with them instead of just being on my own. Because there were a number of areas that the RFP required that I felt we, you'd do better having broader representation through a firm model.
Oh, okay. I understand now. So you still have your, your law firm, but you're also with them?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And if you'll recall, and if you'll recall, oh, I believe in twenty twelve, when I worked with you all, I was with this firm. So it's been a longstanding relationship.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Sure.
Adrian goes way back with us and try as we might, she's just too valuable to let her go completely. She's trying to get away.
Okay, are, are there?
It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure having all of you tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Eckes.
Okay, trustee La French, do you have ques- questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, trustee Turner?
Um, no, I have no questions, uh, tonight. Trustee.
Okay.
And trustee Bentz, if I can just add this, if it's okay with you. We're not a firm that cycles different attorneys in and out. You request who you want, and that's who you'll get consistently and all the time. So that's very important to us because we don't operate on a mill basis, meaning that any attorney is interchangeable. It's important for us to know the clients we are working with, to build that relationship and have trust, and for you to have trust in what we do. And that's not to say there won't be other attorneys that might assist, but primarily you'll have one counsel.
We'll have one coun- counsel. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I would also just add really quickly, because I think that's a good point that Adrian raises. And, you know, every, every district has a different way of using their attorneys. But I think the one thing that we have found really effective, but which is kind of why we've have the, our clients for so long, is that, you know, the, the stable is communication. And for you folks to make the right judgments and the right decisions, uh, it's really based upon your lawyers giving you candid advice based upon the law and the facts so that, uh, you can make the best judgments for the district at the time. And it doesn't, we've found over the years, it doesn't do either of us a service if we just uh, come to you and tell you what we think you want to hear versus, uh, what you should hear and whether it's, sometimes it's good news and sometimes it's bad news. But it's our opinion, and I think you don't have to adopt it. But we feel strongly that whether it's good or bad, you need to know the straight candid story about what the risk exposures are and what the good, good parts and bad parts are. So you, the elected officials can really make the right judgments. I think that's important.
And you know, this is Christine Turner, and that's one thing that I appreciated from Adrian over the years. She just didn't give us advice as to what we wanted to hear. Um, we all went our way. And she gave us, she was straight, uh, gave us straight information from, from the, from the law and, uh, told us what we needed to hear rather than what we wanted to hear. And that, and I appreciate that very, very much. So we wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank, thank you so, so, so much for come, coming and be, being so patient. Um, I know it's late and I tr- truly appreciate you take, taking the, the time to be with us. It is greatly appreciated. So we will go on to fourteen point zero, zero one, approval of league, league, league legal coun-counsel for the board, board of trustees. Can I get a mo- motion?
I have one more question. I'm sorry. Um, it is my understanding that you are on retainer just for the board. Am I correct? Or are you also for our district?
For the board, Mrs. Eckes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Can I get a mo- motion?
Oh, I motion.
Okay, we get a mo- motion.
I second.
Okay, so a mo- 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 motion from trustee Eckes and a sec-second from trustee Turner. Can I get a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, trustee Bentz.
Bentz, I, I was gonna do.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
And trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Turner, aye, all right.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Do we have to men- men- mention that we hired this firm? Cause there were two, but the other one dropped, dropped out. Do I have to be specific?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, be specific. Okay, so this was a mo- motion and a vote to hi-hire all, all of their Ber- Beris, Ma- Madruga and Lemieux, O- O'Neal, LLP, OMLO as board coun-counsel.
Yeah.
Yay, okay. So we're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
You too. I know.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to fif- fifteen po- po- policy introductions, updates and redeems. Fif- fifteen point zero one.
Trustee Bentz, I believe we're at fourteen point oh three.
Didn't, oh, we, we do have to pass that one. That's right. I'm sorry. Okay, four, fourteen point zero, zero three, uh, pr- approval of a gre- agreement with Edie Bay Bailey or E- E- Bay Bailey?
Where I know one minute.
For fis- fiscal ser- services of support for the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one fif- fiscal year. And.
Doctor.
Get somebody to talk about this, or am I just gonna move?
I apologize. So, so board, as we discussed, th- th- this is a accounting firm to provide, uh, increase of capacity to our fiscal service department. As we prepare for first, uh, interim report as well as federal program monitoring, uh, we have recently lost some significant, uh, some key staff in that area. And so we want to just provide some backup support for the short term. Thank you.
Okay, um, can I get a mo- mo- motion?
Trustee Turner, a motion.
And a sec-second? Um, I, I will sec-second.
Can we go into discussion?
And let's go into discuss- discussion, please.
Okay. Dr. Mitchell, you mentioned that this is temporary because we lost key staff. Uh, what exactly will this form do, this firm do for us?
Uh, Mr. Kraus, uh, could you provide a little bit more detail for the board? Thank you.
Yes, uh, good evening, members of the board. So in the absence of a director of fiscal services, which we will be flying, hopefully, that position soon to fill it in the interim, uh, this firm will be providing support. Recently, there are many, many reports due with the COVID nineteen funding uh, that the district has received, that, uh, in fact, there's one due tomorrow. Uh, we are also in the middle of a federal program monitoring review uh, where they request massive amounts of fiscal data that, uh, the director of fiscal was working with staff to produce for the month of October when we have our FPM. We also have several, um, other reports coming up. As Dr. Mitchell stated, the first interim is in December. Uh, they will be assisting with that to ensure, uh, that our reporting requirements are met for the county and the state. The other, uh, concern and the reason why we wanted to hire a firm such as Edie Bailey, who was, who was known as VTD before, and they've worked in just about every district in San Bernardino County at one time or another, uh, in the absence of fiscal staff, is because of segregation of duties as well. So the CBO and the director, uh, one approves something and another puts it forth in the system so that there's checks and balances. We have an audit coming up in November as well. So that's one of the things the auditor looks for. For instance, I can initiate a purchase and then sign off on it as well. So that's one of the things that the director would do, is they would initiate a purchase order, a rec. It would come to me for approval and then go back through the process. So, uh, because of the absence of that, uh, this firm will also be assisting with the segregation of duties so that we are not, uh, potential, we are avoiding potentially audit findings, uh, in the future related to that. But our hope is that we will find somebody, and this is a not-to-exceed amount, which means that we may not even use twenty thousand, but that just gives us a little bit of cushion to be able to assist the district should we need their support as we move forward. We also have a brand-new staff member in the budget department that just joined us this month, in fact, as well. So our, our, our staff is new, and now we have the absence of a major staff member, uh, again, that we hope to fill quite quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Okay, uh, trustees and any que- quest- questions? No? Okay, can? Any, okay, so can I get a vote, vote, please?
Xavier.
Trustee Bentz.
Bentz, aye.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee La French. Trustee. And trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we go on to fif- fifteen point zero, zero two, uh, adopt and approve the first re- reading of board.
We were tabling that one.
I thought, no, I thought we were, uh, pro- proving fif-
Yes, we.
Fifteen point zero, zero two.
Yes, board.
I thought we tabled.
Well, tabled fifteen point oh one.
Board, the reason this is urgent is because, uh, this, this board policy revision is as a result of the FPM finding that found that our board policy was not, was, uh, was old and inadequate uh, as it relates to foster youth.
Okay, so, all right, so we are adopting and appro- approving the fir- first read, reading of board po- policy and admin administrative regulations, six one seven three point one, um, ed- education for foster youth. Can I get a mo- motion?
Eckes, I motion.
Can I get a sec-second?
Trustee Turner, I second.
And a vote, please?
Trustee Bentz.
Bentz, aye.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Okay, pa-passes for zero. Okay, we have no, um, six sixteen, no, no re- recess to close sess- session. We move on to sev- seventeen, su- super and tendents re-report.
Thank you, trustee Bentz. In the interest of time, I'll keep my comments brief. At our last board meeting, uh, the board requested information about whether or not we are participating in a, in a new state of California nutrition program. Uh, we, we did provide the board a more correspondence indicating that we weren't a- as yet or not now. But we are currently participating in all this, uh, federal nutrition programs and we're providing, we're serving, uh, two, two thousand three hundred thirty-one kids every day, serving a thirty-five thousand plus meals a week to our students, and we'll continue doing it. Uh, secondly, um, we did, uh, the board, uh, did hear some concerns from our, from our, our partners in ADTA around our COVID, uh, case reporting protocols. We, we have since, uh, we have since, uh, resent those protocols to our school leaders. We are, we are constantly reinforcing our, our protocols and how to respond, uh, to any active cases. Though we're still learning, but we're making sure that we're hearing strictly to the Department of Public Health's guidance on case reporting. Number three, um, the board asked for information on whether or not children are participating. Number three, the Board asked for information on whether or not children are participating in after-school programs. Dr. Williams talked a little bit about realigning the after-school program due to COVID and distance learning. And so currently, we'll have six hundred, over six hundred forty kids participating in after-school tutoring and support programs of various natures. Number four, Board members expressed a concern around access for parents to the Ares Portal, the parent portal. We are really pushing the use of our Ares Portal, provides key information around grades and attendance for our parents. We looked into the Ares Portal. Currently, we have three thousand two hundred twenty-seven of our parents that are actively logged on to the parent portal. We've been working to resolve some issues with parent access. So currently, fifty-eight percent of our parents have an active account. We're trying to push that to a hundred percent. And we're providing, the next two weeks, we're providing for trainings for our parents to use and access the information about their children on our online Ares portal. So we're pushing that heavily. We believe that if parents know that their kids are missing classes, you know, in distance learning or having missing assignments or grades, we think that that's, that parent involvement will improve how our students are doing in the classroom. Next, we had an opportunity, we were invited by our partners over at Victor Valley School District last week, and our whole cabinet went over to support the grand opening of their new GED testing facility, and so had an opportunity to support our friends and neighbors over at Victor Valley Union High School District. I want to congratulate Dr. Williams and his Board for opening up their new GED testing facility. We are in talks with having a satellite offering in our district because we know that our children have siblings that are in high school, and we want to be able to offer the opportunity for kids to advance their education more locally in our district. So we are talking in terms of a partnership in that area. And with that, again, as, just back to the board presentation tonight, while school reopening, we will continue to follow the COVID case rate very closely, Board, and keep our community involved and informed. And so, Board, you'll see, you'll see some invitations to our upcoming parent information meetings, as well as when we get data back from our teachers and classified staff around their input and feedback on reopening models. We'll be happy to share that with the Board. So Board, I will plan on giving a brief overview at each of our board meetings during my comments in terms of where we currently stand, because we know that this is a very important issue for the Board. So with that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Right, thank you. We have five minutes left, and we're at eighteen point zero zero one. I don't think we want to vote to extend, so can we forego this?
Yes.
Trustees, okay, La French?
I do have something I want to say real fast. I just want to go on record to say that the amount of money that we spent today, that, you know, I hope that, you know, that next time that we do meet, that it's not that, you know, we're given an agenda, you know, on a Friday and then asked to make decisions. We have to spend that amount of money.
Okay.
Would you?
I agree.
I would like to be given more of a notice on things and have more of like an input, and we could talk about this, you know. But I don't, I don't like having to continue to spend this kind of money on something that, you know, I think that it should have more input. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Okay, so let's go down to nine nineteen adjournment. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Eckes, I forgot to say you.
No, I'm good, hon. I'm good. I motioned to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion from trustee Eckes and a second from, who was that? I'm sorry.
Trustee La French.
Okay, La French, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Benz.
Benz I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, we are, that's four zero zero. We are closed. Good night. Please have a safe evening and a great, great week. Thank you.
Good night.
The time is twenty-seven.
And the time is nine forty-seven. I'm like, let's go home. All right, good night.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.
Bye.